...for the meeting of the Hastings Planning Commission order. We'll begin with a roll call. Oldhouse, Darling, is absent. Foster, here. Blake, here. Mauer, here. McLean, here. Muertal, here. Tassiba, here. And Haffey. So, we're two absent, but we do have a forum and are legally convened. If you'll all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. In this republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in your packets, you've received the proposed agenda. Are there any changes anyone would like to suggest? Do we have motion to approve the agenda?
Moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Likewise, in the packet, were the minutes of our February 5th meeting? Any corrections?
Nothing I saw.
You have a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, make a motion to accept the minutes.
Moved and supported. All, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We have no information items. We have one public hearing tonight to review and consider a special use permit and site plan review from Rusty Bible for a contractor yard for construction equipment at 1631 South Hanover. So, Dan, you want to give us a review?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Bible has approached the city and submitted an application for both site plan review and special use permit for a contractor yard for construction equipment at his address. And in one note, when the public hearing was noticed, it referenced 1633 South Hanover. At that time, our assessing department had not assigned an address. If you recall, Mr. Bible used to own both parcels that were very long in nature from west to east. He has since divided that property. Planning Commission reviewed a site plan for Chris Nelson, N6, towing for the front half of that parcel back in January. The property has since been divided, and Mr. Bible will be developing the eastern section of those two parcels with an address of 1631 South Hanover, accessed by a 35-foot easement from Hanover to the property, a 35-foot easement to the north of the N6 property. Again, this property is located in the B Business 6 zoning district. Special use in that district is for contractor yards for construction equipment, and that's what Mr. Bible has submitted his application for in the special use that's in front of you. So, other than that, I have no other introduction unless there's questions.
Any questions for Dan? Seeing none. Rebecca?
Well, so you have my staff report in front of you, and really, just a couple of comments. As you review this particular site plan, you're going to be directed or guided by your special land use criteria, by your site plan review criteria, and by the design standards of the B 6 district. The staff report is structured, and it goes through each of those three sets of standards. And on the last page is a summary of that, and you'll note that I provide you with responses to the special land use criteria that essentially sort of end up supporting the proposal, and you'll see those notes on that. With respect to the development proposal, I have just a handful of three different things that require additional information, and then your standard conditions of approval. So, the B 6 district does have building design standards. They are going to apply, a couple of them are going to apply here. This particular proposal does not have building elevations, and so we couldn't confirm that that complies, so that will need to be addressed. Number two, the site plan did not indicate a lighting proposal. If they're not going to have lighting, that's fine, but if they are, then we'll need to confirm that it complies. And thirdly, you do have standards in your ordinance for both screening and for landscaping. The screening proposal is essentially applicable along the north and the east boundaries where it abuts the PUD district, and the retention of existing vegetation in those areas is proposed, and so I think puts you in a position to accept that as screening, but that will take action by the PC to say, yeah, we think that's adequate. You also have some landscaping, a landscaping standard that applies to the front yard, so it would be along the west boundary, and they are actually proposing some landscaping in that area, but it does not specifically meet your criteria, your particular standards. However, you do have a provision in your landscaping standards that allows the planning commission to accept modifications to those standards if you feel the proposal is adequate in serving its purpose. So, aside from those decisions that the planning commission needs to make, I think your standards necessarily would be your fire, public services approval, and your sign condition of approval, which are your standard, your comments.
Thank you. Any questions for Rebecca before we open the public hearing? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Rusty, you're welcome to make a statement if you'd like, although you reviewed this for us pretty thoroughly last month. But if you would like to make a statement, would you please go to the podium so you have a microphone there?
My, I guess my questions, my concerns, so to speak, is I've had that 1633 now for seven years. I've operated out of that. I've pretty much always done what the city has asked, and even though I had construction equipment sitting there, if you looked at my equipment, it was all put in the back corners. It was all setting nice and neat. It wasn't just ever which way. I got to believe that after seven years of being part of this community, even though I'm running a business, which was more visible at the old shop than it would be the new shop, that some of that needs to fall into play where this guy's been a good citizen of the Hastings. He's kept his place looking clean. Some of that needs to fall in. I had a hard time hearing, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The lighting issue, we were going to put lights in the overhangs so they shine right directly on the building. Again, it is just a, it is almost a personal shop that I'm storing my equipment at. And then, I didn't catch what else she had, but if any questions, feel free to answer them.
We'll get back, we have to, at the end of the public hearing, you know, if we have questions, we'll come back to you at that point. All right, at this point, are there any public comments anyone would like to make? More against?
Good evening. I'm Mark Engler. I own three parcels on the east side of South Hanover Street. I've been there since about 1975. Historically, it has been heavy construction. I think Mr. Tassiba is the only one can remember where the dental office was, was Baldwin's Excavating. Then there was Lyons Excavating, before the tree trimming guy to the north of mine was there, you had Gary Binky, which had a heavy crane. So, we all want to support our community and local business, and I want to see Mr. Bible and his wife successful. And basically, it's a home occupational because their house is right next door. So, he's been a blessing to us because we don't live there, and his eyes have always been on our property. So, he kind of keeps an eye on things. So, I want to see the small business people continue to succeed without creating a larger financial hardship for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to questions from commissioners. Questions? Comments?
It seems like, given the location of where this is going, that the proposed landscaping as is makes sense for that site.
Right.
And retaining the existing trees on site, I mean, to me, that's adequate for this particular location. So, I didn't have any issues with that.
I would agree with that. I was thinking the same thing. There will be plenty of screening kind of between apartments behind you and this. That would be the main thing. Otherwise, you're your own neighbor and kind of secluded back there anyway.
Any other questions or comments? If not, what's your pleasure?
I'll support.
Rebecca, you want to walk us through the necessities, just so we're clear on that?
Yeah, under the direction of staff.
I'm assuming that the motion would include...
Yeah, so it would be, right, an approval of the special land use permit and the site plan for the proposed construction yard. And really, I think your only condition, well, it would be based on your findings of the criteria as reflected in the staff report, which your minutes can certainly do that. And I think your only conditions of approval would be that there is compliance with applicable building design standards, and that can be administratively reviewed, and then your signed proposal, or that it's subject to the signed standards in the permit process, and it's subject to fire department and public services review. Everything else, you've approved the screening, landscaping, and lighting, and so that's, that can stand as presented.
Any concerns with any of that?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, I'm having a hard time hearing. What was, one was the lighting?
No, you told us what the lighting would be, and as long as the final elevations reflect that, that's, that's fine. We're accepting the screening the way that it is, not requiring any additional screening. So, it was really just, you know, making sure that the building design conforms to the normal building requirements in the city, and...
The same for the sign.
And same for the sign.
And I'm sorry, I'll speak up. I'm sorry.
I work on construction, of course, in certain tones. I had a hard time hearing.
Yeah. And other than that, the normal review by our public safety and engineer, which I don't think should present any problems. So, other than that, it's approved as you were proposing to approve it as you presented it.
Yeah. The Public Services Department has reviewed the site plan and has presented a list of questions and/or modifications that need to be made to the plan, but those have been provided to the applicant. So, your condition, subject to that approval, is adequate.
Okay. And everything that needs to, those few things that need to be addressed can be handled administratively, and so you'll be working through Dan with that. So, we have a motion in support. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, approved. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
New business? We have none. Old business? JPA, JPC update? Any questions for us regarding JPA, JPC? Nothing much is happening in that area, so. Work task list, Dan?
Work task list, let me get back to that after the site plan. Too many pages in the site plan. My apologies. I'm going to go to the papers. I don't believe that there were any significant changes to the work task list other than the housing committee did meet regarding those items at the end of the work task list. Housing committee did meet, and we are scheduled to meet again on April 4th to start taking action on some of those work plan task items that are on the list. We're compiling information, really, which is a refresh of our two to four multifamily housing units currently in the city of Hastings, identify locations and zoning districts for those. We've received some of the information for that that will be shared with the committee on April 4th. I know Rebecca is working on action items in the front half of the report. We'll be continuing to work with her on that, but other than that, there's really no other significant additions or deletions.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on the work task list? All right, site plan tracker, Dan?
The only, I think the only amendment was for N6 towing Chris Nelson on the site plan that was conditionally approved on January 2nd. Staff, administrative staff have reviewed a couple of those items and found weren't compliant, so those were deleted. I believe the only thing at hand right now is the Department of Public Service final review of the wastewater, or the stormwater runoff.
What's going on with Meadowstone at this point?
Meadowstone, they have sent out their bid request for the project. I believe we're waiting on final Eagle permit approval for some of that stormwater runoff compliance, and I believe they're, you know, as soon as the Eagle permit is acquired and they get all their bids back, I believe they're going to start construction as soon, as soon as they can.
But Eagle permits for the water and sewer being exonerated.
Right.
Okay. And on the whitewater car wash, the condition for completion, did we get a landscaping plan from them?
Not a final one yet. I am in contact, occasionally in contact with the engineer for that company, and will continue to work with her.
In doing that, would you make sure that the retaining wall between that property and Taco Bell is addressed because that wall is now crumbling?
Crumbling.
As a result of all the...
Right.
Machinery moving through there, so just make sure that's...
Addressed.
Addressed. Any other questions for Dan?
I got a question, Dave.
Okay.
EWB, you know, was this a couple of years ago, we, I don't know if it was that long ago, he was supposed to do something with monument signed on it, or is he ever going to do anything with that sign?
He stopped and started that process a couple of times, so I'm not sure where he is. He has not located tenants in that building. I think that's the primary holdup, is he has not nailed down any tenants in that new facility.
When he does this, when, and I don't know if he's waiting for those apartments to be done across the road, you know, he put in a new driveway over there. There's a bench out by the road, I think's in the right of way. You got people driving in the out down there. I don't think he, he really needs to find his driveway. I don't, and I don't know if we can go back on when we approved, when he built on there, you know, he had to have a certain amount of parking spots. Is there something maybe we need to have a talk with him?
I can review the site plan that was approved several years ago to...
Does it look like he's got enough parking spots there anymore now, though?
Yeah, I can, I can review the site plan for...
I don't think about it, only when I drive by there or if I see it on our list.
Well, if you'd look into that and specifically give us a report on that next month, please?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Any other comments for Dan? All right, we'll move on to item number D, and glad to have you back with us. Unfortunately, we did not get the staff report on this until late this afternoon, so I'm not sure that anybody's even had a chance to review that. So, what we're going to do is, you know, just continue the discussion that we had with the hope that we can get a public hearing scheduled then for our April meeting, so just to let you know where we are. Rebecca, yeah, do you want to review your comments on that?
Yes. Well, after your discussion last month, you had asked me to essentially analyze the proposed rezoning, and this would be going from the RS to the R2. And in addition to that, maybe provide some rationale and sample text language for amending the RS, the side setback in the RS district as an alternative to the request of rezoning. So, I actually did both. That's in the report in front of you, and I apologize for the delay on that. And so, I would like to sort of highlight some of the findings in both of those exercises. So, on page two is where the bulk of my comments are with respect to the rezoning. So, your master plan has two different elements to it that sort of speak to providing guidance on future land use. One is a regulating plan which recognizes existing land use patterns, and then the other is the future land use map that is essentially representing the vision for the property. So, interestingly, this particular area, and I'm not talking just about the applicant's property, but about the expanded area. So, if you, that was sort of the foundation of my review is this expanded area here. And interestingly, the regulating plan itself recognizes this area, east of the area, as what you might call core neighbor, I'm sorry, as single family, which is, you know, sort of the neighborhood type densities. And the regulating plan recognizes the area to the west as rural residential, essentially. And interestingly, this area, this middle part that you're considering in the regulating plan, is really viewed similarly to this neighborhood area to the east. However, the future land use map views this area as a single family growth, similar to this area, and this viewed as core neighborhood. So, the two different maps within the master plan sort of have a divergent view because one is recognizing existing pattern and the other is recognizing envisioned growth pattern. The bottom line is that currently, the more important point to that is that in order to rezone, as you know, you must rezone consistent with your, with your master plan. And so, I think you're putting, you're being put in a position of trying to identify what your master plan actually says. And I would say that, you know, the future land use map certainly suggests that if you want to rezone this to something other than RS, something with a higher density than the current RS, that you're looking in an amendment to your master plan being needed. Now, that's not to say the master plan wouldn't support such an amendment, but I do think that that would be the step. If not now, certainly within the year, when you take up, maybe you take up other master plan amendments. So, that is, that is a essential point. One of the things you look at when you're sort of considering, in addition to the direction provided by your master plan, you're also looking at the kind of impact that that might have on existing and proposed and surrounding land use in the area. And so, I also just did a review of the parcel layout and determined that, so that this area in here, surrounded by red, actually contains 26 different lots as proposed, one of which is the applicant's lot with the blue star. And right now, all of these lots currently do not have the sufficient size or width to allow for land divisions in the R2 district. Now, that's an important assessment to make because the reason you tend to zone up, if you will, whether it's being requested or whether you're just acting to do it, usually is to either gain additional land use options or to gain, or to gain additional density. And so, usually, when a planning commission is considering the merit of zoning up, they're trying to sort of make this decision as to, do we want these additional land use options? Whether the applicant's proposing it or not isn't the point because you can't bind them to it. So, do we support additional use options and/or do we support additional density? So, as it relates to the fact that none of the lots in here have the width or the size because you would need both in order to divide the land and create two new parcels, none of those, none of those can be divided even if they're put in the R2 zoning. So, one could say, well, you might be changing a use option, but you're certainly not going to be getting any more building sites by virtue of rezoning. So, that's an important finding. However, the RS district does not currently allow for duplexes, and the R2 district does. And there are separate building size and lot frontage standards that apply to a piece of property if they're going to be occupied by a duplex. And I went ahead and analyzed these 26 lots as it relates to that finding, and currently, 19 of the 26 lots are of adequate size and width to accommodate a duplex on the property. I know they are currently occupied by single family, but it would allow for a conversion to a duplex. So, if that were to happen, if you were to resell the bulk, you know, this area to R2, you would essentially open up 19 of the 26 parcels to the possibility of use for duplex. Now, that's neither good nor bad. I'm just saying that is answering your question as, as it relates to increasing use and increasing density, which is an impact of zoning up. So, you would just have to sort of determine whether or not that's a finding that you find acceptable. So, in the summary, which is essentially on page two, I sort of summarized what it is I just said to you. But in my last point, I do suggest consideration, which because you'll be noticing this for public hearing, just like you have the ability to expand the area considered for rezoning from just the applicant's piece to include all 26 parcels, you also have the ability to notice it to include other districts other than the R2 district. So, what you actually recommend for approval can vary, but if you've noticed it in your public hearing notice, then you have the option of making that decision as to, you know, do we want to include all of these 26, just half of them? Do we want to go R2 or something else? And so, with that sort of opportunity in mind, I suggested consideration of, considering the R1 district as an option in that it does change those numbers on density, and yet it still provides for a reduced side setback. The reduction is a little bit less than what you would get in the R2, requested R2, but it does reduce it. And it also would essentially serve as a transition between the RS and the R2. So, I only suggested that that may be an option that you, that maybe you feel warrants further study in terms of providing some, some of the latitude that the applicant's seeking and still... seeking and still being maybe more consistent with your master plan. Um, I did a similar depth of study with respect to, um, rather than rezoning, maybe the alternative being, um, just going into the RS district and looking at your side yard setback requirements and seeing if that would be an easier fix to, to the motivation behind this particular rezoning of that particular property. And so you'll see in my bullet points, I, I tried to lay out what all of the existing conditions are right now, and you can see how they, um, differ between districts. And then in addition to that, sort of how detached accessory buildings are dealt with. If you're an attached garage, um, your, the, whatever setback applies to the home, the principal dwelling is what applies to the, to the attached garage. A detached garage has different, different setback standards, so that depends on the district you're in. So I laid that all out to allow you an, an easy way to compare apples to apples. But, um, I, at the bottom of page three is where I suggest maybe some amendments that you might consider making, because in the RS district currently, the side setback requirement is a total of 40 with a minimum of 15 on one side. So if you have 15 on one side, then you, then you have to have 25 on the other side. And with all other uses being at 25, and you can see how different that is from the R1 and R2 districts. Now, of course, the R1 and R2 districts allow for single and two family and about half the size of the lot, but, um, you know, the, the side setbacks are far reduced from that. So what I'm suggesting is perhaps modifying the 40 and 15, reducing that down to a 25 and 10, similar to the RD district, um, which would represent, um, slightly less than half, which would, which would be similar to the density standard in the district. So it would be sort of pairing the setback up to the density standard in proportion to the other district, to be similar in proportion as the other districts. So that would essentially reduce the, the standard from, from 40 to 25 total, and then 10 on one side, so you'd get a 10 and a 15 essentially. And, um, with, uh, and then that, which, that would apply to attached garages and principal buildings if you made that change. Um, and then to go in and modify the detached garages, which in the applicant's case is what would apply to them, to simply modify that to a straight 10 foot. Now, that is not as low as what would be allowed in the R2 district, which allows, um, six feet, and then that can be reduced down to three feet if it's 60 feet off the road. So three and six feet versus, uh, 10 feet.
And what is it in the one?
Uh, in the one, it is 18 and 7. So with the RS being 25 and 10, I thought that, and, and they seem to pair up with the sizes and the uses. So I thought proportionally, so I thought that, that would be another way if, if you felt that rezoning was more than what you wanted to be accomplished. And if you really wanted to focus on this particular applicant's, um, you know, the sort of, uh, concern or, or what they were hoping to accomplish, it might be just as easy to go in and modify your, a couple of your setback provisions in the RS.
You have, uh, just question, uh, you approached this from the standpoint of complying with the master plan by doing something that is supported by building up. To me, yeah, a significant issue with this is why it ever got zoned RS to begin with? Because the, the majority of the houses in this area existed prior to that change. That change made them non-conforming and.
Non-conforming, what do you mean?
They're non-conforming by the, the set, principally by setback requirement. Dan, what was your analysis?
Out of the 26 parcels in that highlighted red area, 11 parcels that I identified were not currently conforming based on side setback in the R, RS district. The setbacks were actually more comparable to the R2. 11 were conforming to the RS standards. Uh, there's three vacant par, parcels. One parcel's owned by Corwell Health, so the long-term plans for that, obviously, we don't know. Uh, the two remaining vacant parcels currently do not comply to either a lot width or a lot size in the RS district. And there was one parcel that has a dwelling on it. I could not determine compliance on that one with either, you know, with, within the RS district.
So if I could ask two questions, because I didn't notice, um, so currently you're, you're saying that the parcels and the setbacks that exist within that area would be fully in compliance with the R2 district standards?
What I'm saying is they are not in compliance with the RS standards. Um, I, I didn't check to see for compliance in the R2. Again, I'm, I hate to assume, but for the most out of those 11, they, they would be in compliance with R2.
In terms of the?
Side setbacks.
Side setbacks, so do you know if they would comply with a 10-foot setback instead of the?
Not, not without going, not without further review.
Okay, so you don't know, okay.
But I would tell you as a resident of that neighborhood, most of them would not comply with the 10.
As a resident of this neighborhood?
Yeah. I, I've got a conflict, so I'm not going to be voting on this. But, I mean, I drive through this neighborhood every day, I, but my house is one of the few that would comply with the RS requirements. But, you know, there were only mine and probably two, three, four others that were built since it was zoned RS.
So, so you're saying that most of the, so what, there's 23 homes in there, that, that most of the homes are less than 10 feet from the side, have a 10-foot setback of six feet or less?
Yes.
And, and so, and what was it zoned before?
I don't know. I mean, it, you know, this all predates, I think, any of us, but, yeah, I've got.
It's been RS for a while.
Uh, yes, and, and most of those houses, except for the ones on the west edge of the, the area we're talking about, were really built at, at a time when, yeah, I'm guessing the zoning was no different for this area than it was for, yeah, the area to the east that we're comparing this to. Now, as you come further west, yeah, uh, lot sizes tend to increase slightly. Jackie is also a near neighbor of this, uh, and you get to look at it from the backside, but, uh, yeah, it, if you drive through, yeah, you only, yeah, you, you don't get a, a kind of differential that you would, I think, expect going from R2 to RS. Most of it's consistent with, uh, the R2 or with the R1.
I would agree. And my lot's bigger and I'm out, I'm outside of those lines.
Right, I mean, but you're an example of kind of the transition that's occurring that as newer houses were, were built in there, lot sizes tended to increase, but they're still not anywhere close to what the RS would have envisioned. I think this change, I, I'm speculating, uh, because it, it's back far enough to say none of us remember, but, yeah, I think that this was done, uh, at the time that development was starting to be proposed for the area where Levi lives, which is further west, it's outside of the aerial you've got here.
How many of you are within 300 feet of this? Well, I mean, that's important, too.
Just me.
You're not within?
No.
Within 300 feet of the boundary? Okay, that's important. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I, I just say, I, I will not vote on this, uh, I can't vote on this, but...
Or even participate in the public hearing.
Well, if you want me to go out and, uh, uh, all right, then I'll withhold comment until we have a public hearing, in which case I'll speak. But I think, you know, I've also got a perspective that provides some information that you don't have. So that's another reason why I spoke.
Yeah, now, I know you're responding to me, but honestly, I was simply providing you the information that, that, that you seek. I do think that if, um, as a board, you're feeling as though the rezoning makes more sense to you than modifying the standard of the RS district, um, then I would suggest that you make a, you sort of take a position on how you want to address your master plan amendment. The reason I say that is because, um, I have generally supported the practice that you only rezone once you hold your public hearing on your master plan amendment. I mean, you do them at the same time, but you, you think that through and then you rezone, since you can't zone inconsistent with your plan. However, I do know that there are, uh, people in the profession who say, well, as long as you talk about it and make the decision that you think an amendment is appropriate, then you can go ahead and rezone, even if you haven't had the public hearing on the amendment, as long as you do, uh, and then maybe you do all of your amendments to the plan, you know, at a single time in a year. That's important because it's a timing issue, which is why communities have done it, so it's kind of ironic, because the reason that standard was put in the statute on timing was so that communities wouldn't keep going and amending their plan. So it was felt that, you know, if, if, if the review process was such that it made that a little more temperate, that, that, that the amendments would be more thoughtful, I guess. However, because it's, it's so time-consuming, that standard, right? There are communities who have said, as supported by their legal counsel, who have said, you know, as long as we, as long as we do the, engage in the process about the amendment and then eventually amend it, you know, within a short time thereafter, that, that it's acceptable, so. And that's important for you, because I'm thinking that if you want to rezone it, you got to amend your plan, but if you don't want to be held up and you want to hear it next month, then that might be the process that you sort of give a nod to.
Could we amend the future land use map and do the rezoning at the same meeting?
Yeah, yeah, but, but the amendment process for the future land use map is, is that lengthy master plan amendment process, whereas the rezoning is a one-month, right? It's a 15-day, and so you could do a rezoning next month, but, but the master plan amendment process would take that, it's about a three-month review process. And so that's what used to slow up the, any rezonings that were inconsistent with the plan, right, had, had their review process lengthened, because you put it out to neighboring communities, they get 63 days to review, they get, and then you hold the public hearing and then, and it just, it's a longer review period, because the idea is so much time and effort is put into the plan that it should not be modified unless you go through that same process. So, I mean, so that's what the law says, so. And I think that's.
What's the risk of, I mean, what's the downside of rezoning without it being consistent with the master plan?
Yeah, I, there's no reason to do that. I, I would never, I would never say that you do, because the statute says you may not zone inconsistent with the plan, so that would be unlawful. Where I think your latitude can be is when you hold the public hearing on the master plan amendment. That's where I think you can facilitate it quicker. But yeah, yeah, you can't. I mean, if, if you, so, I mean, if you just think that, if, if you think through the sort of the, um, foundation of the process, the idea is that you're putting all of the thought in ahead of time on this future plan, and then you rezone according to that. So if you're going over here and you're already dealing with the rezoning and it's not matching this, then the, then the thought is, is like, well, why is that? Has something changed? What has changed your mind on this plan? Well, and there may be things that have changed your mind, so the idea is, well, then back up, go through that thought process, and if that's true, then change it and then rezone. But it's just with, by virtue of them tagging that, that first step with such a lengthy review, it becomes frustrating, right? And so, but it doesn't mean the, the, the process itself is not warranted. You're making me. I need you to just stop.
I'm, I'm sorry, and I really, I probably shouldn't say anything more, but, yeah, to me, we're correcting an, an error, we're not changing our mind. This area's developed, anything we do is not going to change what's in this area. We mischaracterize this area in the master plan.
Understood, but the master plan was recently adopted and it was reviewed and prepared over the course of time, and so, yeah, you're right. I don't think you can say, well, but that was just a mistake. I think you can say, I think we made a mistake and I think we should change it. You know, and I, I mean, and, and you've given the reasons why you think that's the case, but I don't think you can just say, no, that's not what we intended. It's so much easier to just go the other way, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm just going to try to, like, wrap my own head around it? So the long version to rezone and would, uh, would require us to redo the master plan, correct?
Amend the future land use map, yes.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Or the other avenue would be to, um, revisit our ordinance and reduce the setback requirements.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want, I, that's, I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
What would, what would be the basis to redo this, the ordinance for the setback requirements? Is it, is our ordinance more restrictive than normal?
Yeah, actually, the reason I suggested that last month, um, because instead of rezoning, there were a lot of parcels, it was inconsistent with the plan, and I thought, I thought, well, good Lord, maybe the setback standards are just out of whack, and that would be a quick fix. And not just for the applicant, but maybe that's a warranted fix. So that's sort of what prompted that, but it, it doesn't mean that that means that's the fix you should do, because honestly, if going to the trouble of making that, well, it's not trouble, but going in there and making that adjustment because you think it's warranted, if it still isn't going to, if your objective, and I, I'm putting this in your mouth because you've never said that this is your objective, but if your objective is to go in there and make the parcels conforming that are not conforming currently, um, and to make, because it sounds like there's a couple of them, and to make.
Half in the neighborhood.
No.
Yeah, just now.
I went through and, well, I went through and checked, I didn't walk it, I went through and checked with the stats on the GIS, but anyway.
Well, I mean, according to Dan's.
I'm talking about parcel sizes.
Okay.
Not homes.
But aren't setbacks just as important as parcel sizes?
Well, I just hadn't finished that, so.
Okay.
What I was saying is if, if your objective was to go in and, and do the thing that would result in any non-conforming lot being made conforming, and I think apparently you have a couple of them in there, that are smaller or narrower than allowed in the RS, and create, um, setback requirements that will render the homes in there in compliance, if that's the objective, is to bring that whole neighborhood up to compliance so that everything, lot and home are conforming, then modifying the RS district isn't going, you know, that's not going to do that. But all, but I'll have. But I'll have to say, I never heard you say that was your objective until tonight. But I do think that if that, if you find that compelling at this point in the game, I think that is, that would be a good reason to proceed with rezoning the area to R2.
I have a question.
Yes.
Kind of practical question, I guess, here. As the applicant, have you guys actually sketched out what you want to do to see if this even will work, even if we did make a change?
I mean, we did our own sketch. We didn't bring one here, but we did some measurements, along with our neighbor as well, to make sure that we're on the same boundary line, or that we found mistakes in the property. So, as I stated last time, we wanted to get as much as we could, because we're trying to put a twenty-four-foot garage, but it's attached. I didn't know if you-
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Well, there you go.
So- It just doesn't look like that would fit.
No. So, because there's approximately twenty-seven feet at one- because the house is crooked on the lot, the front corner would be closer than the back, of course, but, so we would have to go down, if we got the six-foot, we could go down to a twenty-one-foot garage and still make it a two-car garage.
Thank you. My concern was if we go through all these acrobatics and then get to the end point and they can't build what they wanted to, anyway, we've wasted a bunch of time.
Well, except that's actually a very good, that's a really good point to elaborate. It's not the point you're making, but it's a good segue for me to make this point, which is, when you rezone and when you- and/or when you amend your district, your text, it should never be for the purposes of allowing an applicant to do the thing they are desiring to do. If it happens to do that too, then great, right? That would be your motivation for doing it. But when you're looking at it, because it affects all property in that district, so you would never want to say, "Well, I think we should reduce that to six so that they can do what they want to do," because now you have all property in that district with that setback. So, it should be the setback that you actually think is appropriate, district-wide.
It's core neighborhood, it's just a new-
But yeah, as an attached, that means-
Right, yep.
The R2 would be a six-foot.
Right.
And the R1 would be seven. So, the RS would be ten.
It's just really weird on the future land use map, how, like, half of this area is core neighborhood, and then it's just like the two little blocks to the furthest west aren't, except for two of the parcels, for some reason. It's just really strange how it-
Yeah, all of this area, yeah, this is within core neighborhood, but all of this is in the- is in the residential-
Oops.
What do they call it?
No idea, I just didn't look it up.
Residential growth A is all of this, and then this part, because this is all this core neighborhood area. But to me, I would, I would say that if the board feels that the R2, you know, if the board thinks as you think, right, like, "Oh, you know, not only should we R2, because it probably should have been from the beginning, but not only that, we think that makes sense that it is, and that there's reasons to modify the future land use plan, to move it into sort of core neighborhood," then I would say, if that's the way you want to move forward, you just have to reconcile the process you want to follow.
My concern, I guess, is that when we do our review of our zoning districts and kind of clean that up, that could potentially lead to another master plan amendment. And I don't think we want to do it twice in a short amount of time. It may not, I don't, we don't know what's going to happen yet, we haven't done it, but it could be when we're looking at it that we do. I don't know.
I would agree with you on that. There is that likelihood.
Levi, I mean, you're in RS, and in a plaque that was designed for RS, do you have concerns over changing the setback requirements?
Yeah, that would be a concern for me. I feel like that's the easy approach, but maybe this is an instance where you have to do the hard one, which is rezoning. The easy option is change the setback requirements for the applicant, but that is-
We're not supposed to make our decision based on that.
Yeah.
I mean, it just amazes me that we made a zoning change that created that many non-conformities.
Well, but it sounds like, I would be curious as to when that was placed in the RS district, because you said it was kind of before you, right?
Oh, well, before me.
Yeah, but it clearly was after the homes were built.
It was after most of the homes were built. My home was probably built after it became RS. I have no issue with being in RS.
No, I know, I'm just trying to get the-
Yeah, the house next to me, actually, the houses that surround me are all non-conforming, based on the setback requirement.
Size setbacks or other-
And probably based on lot size as well. I mean, yeah, every one of them.
It's interesting to me, because there's definitely a change in lot size when you cross over into that RS, and that you can see it on the map, but the setbacks, it's like they built them when the lot size was set one way, but they didn't have the setback requirement.
Well, yeah, except, yeah, the, and I don't know, I can't speak to all of them, but mine, yeah, as an example, gets shown as one lot. I actually own five lots, so when that was platted, it was platted with the small lot size.
Exactly.
Right. And the house across the street, on the other side of Walnut from me, is the same way, and I'm, actually, the one behind me is that way, because they, we split one lot between the two of us, yeah.
Has that street been vacated, or is that still a-
Coming up the side, it's not, it's not built, it's not been vacated, the right-of-way is still there. But, see, that was done at the time when I think the hope was that that field between you and us was going to be developed, and so the zoning was done to cover that land and the Ironside Drive neighborhood. And why it got picked up, the stuff, you know, on the very eastern fringe of that is, who the heck knows?
So, I think it would be my preference to rezone, but I don't think that it's prudent to go through the master plan amendment process before we've done our other reviews. So, I'm not sure where that leaves us.
I don't, do you know what she's referring to? One of the things on our work task list is going through and reviewing all of our zoning to try to make sure that it truly reflect, yeah, we've got a fairly complex zoning code compared to a lot of communities, and I think we realized that as the housing committee has been working on, yeah-
Well, as the master plan-
Some of the multifamily issues.
Yeah, the master plan recognized that, too.
So, we felt that we needed to take a comprehen- make a comprehensive review of our zoning, our residential zoning ordinances in particular, to make sure that we are doing really what we intend to do.
Is that looking at just the ordinance itself, or also what properties fall within the ordinance?
It could be either one.
Is there an idea at this point in time, how many areas like this there might be in the city that we could review?
No, that's part of, yeah.
So, Sarah, I would say that, like I said, that approach has been deemed acceptable in a lot of communities, so I don't know that there's a problem with it. I would only suggest that the planning commission, when they hold their public hearing on the rezoning, when they recognize, because one of the first things you look at, right, is is it supported by the plan, and that the planning commission's answer to that is going to be, it's not supported by the future land use map as currently reflected in the plan, and then have that conversation that you would have, right, if you were seeking to determine whether or not you want to amend it, so that it's foundational in there as to supporting any amendment to the plan, future land use plan, that would support the rezoning, so that you can go ahead with the rezoning, and then sort of identify that on a list, and then move that forward to when you go in and amend the plan to do other things. You would say, "Yeah, we already went through that review process and are in support of this future land use map amendment, we just didn't hold the public hearing process on it."
Which is kind of funny, because we are holding a public hearing on the rezoning, so it's just, why would the other public hearing come up with a different result? I don't, I don't really know. Just for my- I'm just saying that as a practical point.
Yeah, I was going to say, and that may be why there are people in the profession who say that although it's a little bit of a workaround, it's still legit, you know, that might be why they say that, it's because, well, you are having a public hearing.
Right.
It's just not being noticed-
In the same way.
In this, right, it's not, it, the notice is not as comprehensive.
Are you saying that this is a public hearing regarding this result, or do we still have to-
We would still have to hold a-
We have to notice it and everything, so, yeah.
I feel like there's twenty-six people here, I'd like to see twenty-six people who would agree with that. I would go ahead and hold the public hearing, do what people have to say about it, if we're up to it.
Well, that's the whole idea. I, you know, if we approve, if we, you know, we just have to know exactly what it is we're proposing that we're going to hold a public hearing on. So, if the proposal is that it's going to be changed to R2 or R1, yeah, or the setback requirements changed in RS, you know, whichever that is, it necessitates a public hearing.
Yeah, and you may want to, if you move the rezoning forward to a public hearing next month, you might want to include the R1. I mean, unless you absolutely are thinking that's not, because it would be interesting, then, to review and see if it would bring, what the level of bringing non-conformities into conformance would result in the R1, and what level of that would result in the R2.
So, we can do that. We can actually hold, yeah, keep that open-
Yeah.
As to which way we're going to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, setback-wise, it's not that different between the two districts, but the use, particularly the duplex, is different, and so that might come up in the public hearing or in our future consideration.
I'm not sure I'm going to let the two of you sit down there by yourself and-
Why's that? You thought I was sleeping? I'm just listening.
Haven't heard, haven't heard much from this end.
Just listening.
Okay, other comments, other questions? If not, where are we going?
Just to confirm, the notice for a rezone request, that'll hit everybody in that zoning district plus three hundred feet-
Three hundred feet.
From the entire district?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a limit on how many, or not a limit, but if there's a certain number of parcels, then it doesn't have to go to all of them?
If, if on one parcel there's more, oh, yes, if there's more than eleven, but that's-
That doesn't mean we have to do it that way, I just want to be clear, I want everybody to understand how we're noticing this, so-
Yeah, yeah, there is a, yeah, I don't have my act with me. I do think it is, I think it's if it exceeds eleven, then all you have to do is publish it.
So-
I can look it up right now.
Okay. Dan's nodding his head.
It is eleven.
It is eleven. So, this is more than that, right? That's what we've been talking about, so-
Yeah, this is twenty-three, yeah, twenty-six.
We wouldn't be required to notice to all of them, but do we want to?
That seems backwards to me. We're affecting more people, and thus, we have to send it. We don't have to send it, we just have to publish it. I mean, the law is the law, but it just seems-
Well, you could, that's a minimum, so even if the law says that, the city can certainly choose to notice.
It's just everybody within three hundred feet of that starts to become quite a bit, so do we notice it to the ones that are in it and not everybody within? I guess it's only on the one side, though, that there's not going to be anybody over there.
Right, you don't, you don't pick up anything, actually, it's, yeah, it's only the one of-
What do you think, Dan?
Staff would recommend that we notice to anybody within three hundred feet.
I think that's a fair way of doing it, because somebody within three hundred feet can be affected by it.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll be overly burdensome, so.
Okay. So, we will notice, but what are we noticing?
R1 or R2 for those properties?
Can we leave it open in the list?
To either of those two, yes.
Considering a change from RS to-
From RS to either R1 or R2, yes. I guess I just made a motion.
Okay, I'm going to take it as that, because I'm struggling here. Okay, we have a motion and support. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a request, with spring break being next month, I would just want to make sure that we had a quorum present for this meeting, if we set up a public hearing, if we notice a public hearing. So, I don't know if this is appropriate time to do kind of a straw vote as to how many will be here.
It's April Fool's Day, too, damn.
I will not be here.
I will not be here.
I'll be here.
I will be here.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
That's fine.
Well, but Dave can't participate.
Oh, that's right.
But that's four.
Well, Tom will probably be here. Aren't I a quorum for the meeting? I just can't, I have to step aside for this one issue.
Yeah, but they still have to have a quorum for their issue.
For the vote.
Okay, well, we'll need to make sure that either-
Unless you move in that time. You could do that.
Thanks, yeah.
That was not helpful.
Yeah, I haven't seen my basement.
Scott will be or will not be, do you know?
What'd you say?
He will not be here, he said to me this morning.
Okay.
He wouldn't be here tonight or spring break week.
Okay, well, then, let's check. He's probably asleep.
I would just hate to hold a public hearing and not be able to act on it-
Right.
Because of quorum issues.
I hope you're getting a really nice garage out of Walnut.
No, it just helps us to make the house what we need it to be, so, it's a lot of work for a garage, but.
Open movie here, and others do.
He's not answering, and he sound, he's very sick. So, let's set it for next month. If we find out that we're not going to have a quorum, then we're going to have to deal with either rescheduling the meeting or postponing a month, so we'll- So we'll notify you as to what, what we may need to do. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nigh abstained. All right. Thank you for your patience. All right. Public comment.
Dan, do you mind going back to the map that has the red outline on it?
Mm-hmm.
By the way, I'm going to public speak.
Okay.
I'm going to try at least. My name is Steve Holken, I live at 943 West Clinton. I thought I came here pretty clear-headed, and the reason I'm speaking tonight, and I hate to drag out your meeting any longer, is-
I'm only going to let you drag it out for three minutes.
Three minutes, perfect then. I'm going to cut to the chase. Don't do it. Don't rezon. I have never, we live, the blue star is Gary, and by the way, this comment is nothing at all personal about Gary and Pam. I've talked to the gentleman three times, four times briefly, so I don't know him enough to not like him or to have a big personal. If you look at, there's a couple of things I want to make sure you take a look at. I'm next to Gary and Pam on the left side of the sheet there. The zoning that is there has to be a minimum 30 years, and I'm going to go back 50 to 60 years, the zoning that was put in place. If you look at the size of those lots that are right there and the setbacks of them, those people that, that have built in the last, well, in the last 30 years, Chairman Hadfield, it's you and I, basically, that have been on that property. When we built, we specifically came to the city and the Planning Commission to make sure that all of our setbacks were adhered to this, to this zoning, from what I remember. Now, my memory's fading a little bit as we get older, but from what I remember, and the biggest problem that jumped out at me was, in those 30 years that we've been there, I've never heard of rezoning. That area, no one's ever brought it up. It only came up when Gary made a request to a garage. Gary was very honest with me this afternoon. We had a conversation in our side yard, and he asked me specifically, "Am I against the garage?" And my answer is to him very simple, and I said this before, "I'm not for it. I'm not, I can't support it because it goes against what we built for." I want to keep Gary as a good neighbor, and if he builds, there'll be no hard-filling if it gets through. But I really want you to take a look at what you're doing to what people have already bought into that have been there in some cases for, for longer than, than we have. The other thing is, is when you start looking at it, western McNair Street is platted. So that's going to, I know this doesn't affect it right now, but the precedent that you're looking at could possibly affect all of that platted area there, if they ever decide to develop it. I was told McNair Street will never be vacated because of that plat, because I asked to have it vacated. And I was told at the city manager at the time, "They won't vacate it because that's a platted field." So I want you to take a look at all the things that I'm bringing up, because I know I'm in a short time. And the other reason I bring this right now is, unfortunately, we won't be here for the first. And I'm going to be, I was, I made, I screwed up today. I made the assumption this was the public hearing, that's why we came down. But the things that, and then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand a lot of the things you were saying, but the one thing I did hear that I didn't know coming into this, because I was thinking, what is this, what is the set, what's the deterrent? Why wouldn't we want to rezon? I don't want duplexes in my area. And if that's a change that would happen, possibly, I know it's not necessarily going to, but it opens it up for another thing, why we spent our, basically, our life savings and our, half of our life in this area. I hope you do change the date. I hope that you do talk to the people in the neighborhoods that are out there, because I think all of us deserve a chance to know exactly what's going on. And I'm not saying some people might not support it. I have a talk to them.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. And I would only clarify a couple of things. What we're considering would have absolutely no, make no change to that, the platted area in the field. We're only talking about everything from McNair to the, to the, so there's only, and, yeah, the vast majority of the, of our neighbors do predate this change. So we have now left them so that they are non-conforming uses.
And I understand that.
And that has a downside.
And I get that's the technical and the legal end of it, but the reality to me, as a person that bought into that area, is it's never come up before. And not because of one person, and, sorry, Gary, because of one person coming in and asking, we're looking at rezoning the whole property, and that changes some other things than, other than just the setback that Gary's looking for.
But wasn't it an option, if I may speak, to just to change my lot?
No, we can't do, that, that is-
I meant on the setback.
You could go through zoning board of appeals. If, if we were to do nothing, your only other option is to go to the zoning board of appeals, which would get you an exemption from the zoning, but, but, but we-
On your lot?
Yeah, we cannot do what's called spot zoning. So, yeah, that's not under consideration.
Oh, no, not to rezon mine, just to change the easement ish, setbacks.
That, we can't just change a setback, that's something the zoning board of appeals could do. It's not something that, that we can do, no. Okay.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud. Other public comments? You want to use another three minutes? Okay. Well, thank you both for coming. We appreciate that. Staff comments? All right. Commissioner comments? Mayor?
I'm glad to see we approved the Rusty Bible property out there. I've been doing business with him over the years, and he's always took good care of that property, you know, kept it clean. And I'm glad we were able to approve it for him.
Nicole?
Thank you to the City of Hastings for participating in Career Fest. It sounded like he had a good time, Jake had a good time interacting with all the kids up there, so.
Great. You don't say to ask the mayor to come up? You don't say to ask the mayor to come up, tell me? Down to you, Mayor.
Oh, I got them.
Comment? Okay. I do not either. So we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I thought he called you Pam, and I'm thinking, who, who?
Ma'am.
Yeah, I know.
Ma'am.
I heard the reference, but where?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
Okay. Move to support. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
He heard Pam, too.
Would you read this? That's what I hear, you're, you're looking at me.